On April 12th, you held a public work session and you made a detailed presentation on the budget. The following week, on April 20th, you voted to adopt the budget, but something had changed. The budget you adopted was not the budget you presented the week before. It was significantly different, and yet no one mentioned that at the April 20 meeting. There was no presentation. Not one person on the meeting mentioned that the budget had changed. The agenda that attached the lengthy budget book did not mention that the budget had changed. And for the first time in my memory, the board did not have District Treasurer Maureen Caraballo or anyone else from the business office present to answer budget questions. And the undisclosed changes were major. The tax rate jumped up by one-third from 1.08 on April 12 to 1.45 on April 20. That's 1.08 to 1.45. And at the April 12 meeting, there was $165,000 of money that could still be spent and be under the tax cap. And you all bandied ideas about on how to spend that money, making no decision at the April 12 meeting. But at the April 20 meeting, that money was allotted somewhere, but without explanation, we have no idea as to where you allotted it to. In sum, there was a switch of budgets with no mention from the board whatsoever. That's not transparent, and that's wrong. You are taking our yes votes for granted. That's wrong too. We'd like to support the budget, but we need honesty and transparency from you. We need you to tell us exactly what you did and what conversations you had between April 12 and April 20. What led to hiking taxes up by a third? What did you decide to spend the $165,000 on and why? It wasn't on making the diversity coordinator full-time despite tremendous community input. It wasn't to add another fifth grade teacher as a parent requested, leaving the incoming fifth grade at unprecedented, unprecedented high class size numbers. And the public deserves to know what you spent it on and why your choice was more important than what was advocated for. And tonight, you're going to vote on your minutes later, and I ask that you vote no, because the public is entitled to know the discussions you had behind closed doors and making this change, and the minutes should reflect that. As an aside, these off-record talks likely violated the open meetings rules. Until your minutes reflect this discussion, when you vote later, you should vote no because they are inaccurate. The public has a right to know how you arrived at your decisions. And even more, the public should never be presented with one budget and have another one subbed in and voted on with no notification of the change whatsoever. It is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any more hands raised, Lauren.
Thank you, Martha. There was a call to order of the meeting prior at 6:45 for the beginning of an executive session. So at this point, we're going to commence the regular portion of the meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 4, 2021. And to begin this meeting, we are going to, we have the joy of hearing the tenure recommendations of six individuals in the district. And it's quite timely as this is Teacher Appreciation Day. And principal appreciation was also on Saturday. In this whole week, many folks in the district are reaching out to educators to be grateful for all of that they've done this year. So it's quite fitting that we get to begin this meeting tonight with tenure recommendations. Dr. Henning Piedmont?
Laura, can I just jump in real quick? Lisa Liffen put some comments here. I just want to check in to make sure procedurally we're following the right procedures. Hearings require you to answer. Will you please answer my questions? I don't know, Valerie or Maureen, if you are clear on what exactly the protocol is right now?
We can follow what we have done traditionally. So if the, during a hearing last, during last year's hearings, since this happens every year, if the process has been to respond to questions, Maureen, I would ask that Maureen address the answer to the question, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah, it's not like public comment, like there can be some, there can be some response.
And I thank you, Doug. I actually didn't see the Q and A down at the bottom of the screen. If that's typically out of my view, so yes, it is, it is fine. And thank you, Maureen, if you could go ahead and reply to the comment that we heard from Ms. Liffen.
Yes, so, so yeah, there was, similar to last year, there's been a good amount of discussion back and forth on the budget proposal. And from the, I was not unfortunately at the last meeting. And what the changes that were reflected in the budget that was adopted that evening was based upon the discussions from the previous board meeting, which there's, in terms of what, what thing, what items were going to be moved forward in the budget, which was at that time, an additional restoration of the science. And then also the discussion around the amount, the appropriate amount of fund balance that was going to be used to balance the budget. And the change in terms of the tax rate was due to the fact that there was a decision made to lower the amount of appropriated fund balance. And again, we did discuss the, you know, the fact that there was a concern about if we didn't start to pull ourselves off, we had an opportunity now with the additional state aid and with the ability to increase the levy to allow us to kind of start minimizing the reliance on that appropriated balance. So that was the, I would say, the significant change that may have impacted the tax rate that was discussed at the previous meeting, which Lisa did mention was a bit lower. And then we talked about that kept, we were levying at that time a little bit below what was the tax cap allowable. And then the decision was then, at that meeting, the discussion was that go to the levy, the full levy, and the offset to that would be the reduction in the appropriated fund balance. So it was really a revenue, like a change in the way we appropriated the revenues at that time. I think part also, and unfortunately, again, I wasn't able to be at the last meeting. The board also was aware that we were getting additional federal funding. And unfortunately, the timing of that wasn't ideal. And it didn't really allow us to unpack what that, what that may help us either be able to fund that may not have made it into our proposed budget. And unfortunately, the timing of those two kind of events, having to adopt the budget and then not yet having the opportunity to get all the information on the federal funds, which today we will speak about a little bit more, where you can kind of see what, what the thought process was in terms of now having those additional monies that we didn't know when we were initially developing our budget. So those were the changes in terms of what had been discussed earlier to what was adopted last week. And again, with the understanding there would be further discussion now with the, with these federal, with the both the American Rescue Plan as well as the coronavirus response relief act supplemental appropriation that we will now be able to think about how we'll use those funds. So I know it's a lot, but there was also the need to adopt the budget. So again, the idea that to pull back some of the fund balance and levy, I'm trying, I think that was the, the changes that were implemented from the previous discussion. And it was, it was all done at that, that meeting, the prior meeting before.
Thank you, Maureen. Yes, I can reiterate that on April 12th, the board had a work session, at which point, at the conclusion, we made the recommendations to Maureen to make those adjustments that she mentioned. And those were reflected in the budget that we voted on on April 20th. There was no meeting of the board or discussion with the business office between board members and Maureen. In between the work session on April 12th and the board meeting that occurred on April 20th, where the vote occurred. And subsequently, I'm sorry, I have to clarify, the vote was completely finished on April 23rd Friday. There was an initial vote on the 20th, and then it was clarified on April 23rd.
Yeah, so, yeah, so all the changes were, came from that work session.
And that's, yeah, Lauren, thank you for responding that way, because I feel that was, at least two or three of the, of the comments seemed to be directed towards the board, not towards Maureen. So I would definitely agree. There were no decisions or discussions that were made outside of the work session and then till April 20th that any of us are aware of. So I felt some of those comments were alluding to something that wasn't accurate there. The meetings were held in public and there weren't any communications that were going on that led to those changes. I think at quite a few board meetings, there was opinions expressed at trying to make the budget smaller or make the effect on the reserves smaller. And I think that's most of the changes that I saw seemed to be stuff that I saw coming and was advocating for. And they didn't feel like it was any sort of last week's switch.
Yes, the recommendations came at the conclusion of the April 12th work session and were reflected in the budget that was presented to the board on April 20th.
Okay, Lisa has a follow-up, so let me.
Thank you. A couple of things. First, I want to clarify. Jeremy Galland, you said, you know, most of my remarks were aimed at the board. They were all aimed at the board, and they were not aimed at Maureen. Maureen works for you. So she, you know, while she's brilliant, she doesn't get to make those top decisions. So they were all aimed at the board. I will tell you, as a board member, as a former co-chair of the Finance Committee, I watched that meeting and I didn't hear those conclusions at the end. And I certainly didn't hear anything about a tax rate hike so significant. And I still don't think I've gotten the answer as to what the 165,000 was spent on. You mentioned science teacher, but that was already in the budget, so it wasn't that. Could you just, could we just get like a one-line answer as to what the 165? You know, it wasn't spent on diversity coordinator, it wasn't spent on fifth grade teacher. Can you just tell us?
Oh, no, Lisa, it was just, it wasn't an increase in spending. It was just a reduction of appropriated fund balance.
So you're using the 165 to push down our surplus? I guess this is my question then. I know it's a good thing to push down our surplus, but you pushed it down quite a bit. It was from, I think, 1.7 million.
Right.
You pushed it down to 700,000 and change, and now you're using that to push it down to 500. Wouldn't it make more sense to do it over several years and keep our program stronger? You seem like you're ripping off the Band-Aid. And we have super pressing things like a diversity coordinator and children of color who are not doing well academically and class sizes that are growing. If you were just, instead of doing it so quickly, you could still reduce it by half and keep our schools with, with more teaching staff and better program.
Right, but I think the fact that, again, that was the segue into the fact that we do have these other federal funds and we, we were, now we were able to kind of now use those also outside, that were not running within our general fund budget. So knowing that there was going to be additional funding coming in, that had to be, that isn't, you know, as you know, I know you're aware with the, with your experience on the Finance Committee, how there are those grants that kind of come in and they're federal. And, and you know, a lot of the monies that are coming in through the state right now, they would not be part of the general fund budget. But to your point, like, it allowed us also the opportunity to reduce that, knowing there were going to be other monies in to address other things that would be, you know, things that we may want to, you know, address using that money. If, so I think that that's going to be kind of part of our presentation tonight as well. So it's connected to kind of some of the thoughts you shared this evening on particular positions.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in again then. I saw budgets where we were at our tax cap, you know, preliminary numbers. We saw numbers that were getting smaller. It's not any additional spending on anything. And we discussed in public concerns about the reserves and where they were heading. And I'm very comfortable with this budget. I feel we made, it's a change from the first iteration, the second iteration. And I think it was, it was clear what changes were coming, what we weren't supporting, what we aren't supporting, how much we wanted to pull down reserves, how much tax cap. There was no increase by one-third. The first one had us at the tax cap, a second idea had us maybe below it, and we ended up back where we were. There were a lot of.
That is true. I'm sorry. You're right. That, that is true.
Yeah, we were at the tax cap. We were pulling down reserves. We were looking at priorities. The board, the board has, has had many meetings trying to figure out what our priorities are. And we will continue to have discussions moving forward.
Thank you, Maureen, and thank you, Jeremy Galland, also for providing some overview of the decision-making that went into the budget. We can now resume the opening of the meeting. And we had begun the tenure recommendation discussion. And thank you to the several faculty that are here and principals that are here to share their thoughts and make recommendations for your patients and for coming and joining us this evening. Dr. Henning Piedmont, if we can restart. Thank you.
Very much, Ms. Berman. So this is really an exciting time of our board meeting. And thank you very much to the board for moving this agenda item up earlier so that the various people who recognize this evening are not, don't have to wait until the very end or that portion of the board agenda. So this evening, we're recommending to the Board of Education the granting of tenure to four educators and two administrators. And what we'll do has been the practice of our last tenure recognitions is that the administrator who supervises the particular tenure awardee will read, you know, or introduce that, that tenure candidate, and then the candidate will say a few words. Obviously, the family is here. We can't see them, but we know that they're here to also support and recognize this really incredible sort of career marker for these six individuals. So I want to thank all the administrators who were present, you know, to make sure that this takes place. So we'll start with Allison Guiney and go on to April Brown, Stephanie Chalmers, Rebecca Mochler, Tessa Stewart, and Andrew Wendell. And what we'll do after each candidate is speaks, we'll ask the Board of Education to vote on that candidate. And, and we'll just do that, we'll follow that flow since that's been our pattern of behavior since we started this, this year or so. I will turn it over to the first candidate to Laura Stewart, and I'm sorry, Laura Sullivan and Tessa Stewart, who will introduce Allison Guiney.
Yes, I think we're two peas in a pod, Tessa and I, so it's. So thank you so much for letting us share with you a little bit about Allison. Allison was a really lucky find. She came to us with experience. She was an experienced psychologist from New Rochelle. She chairs CSC meetings, she chairs 504 meetings, and she does endless, endless evaluations, psychoeducational, psychologicals, educationals, anything that we ask of her. She also reviews all types of data that we ask of her. Allison is intense, precise, and writes very, very deep reports. And she is quite a perfectionist. Allison is a runner, a mom of two young boys, and somehow manages it all gracefully and with style. Always looks just like she looks right now on camera. That's how she always looks. And parents love her, and yet she doesn't have a caseload. So you ask, how does this happen? Because how would anybody really know so much about, you know, a psychologist that doesn't have a caseload? Well, it's because she, when doing any type of testing, she really truly makes an effort to get to know every single family. And not just reaching out to say, hi, my name's, you know, Allison Guiney, and I'm going to test your child. She sits with the family, gets a background on the family, sits with a child, and really creates a relationship that builds over time. So in the time that she's been here, she has had parents now reaching out to request that she chair their meetings because she has built very grounding relationships. So Tessa, did you want to jump in?
I think you covered everything, you know. The only thing I think, the only word to describe Allison I would use is thorough. You know, I think, you know, she's always wants to do the best job that she can, and she wants to make sure that everything is done right. And, you know, she does come with good intentions. So, you know, it's been great working with Allison for the past three, 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 four years. It's been a while, but, you know, so it's definitely been a pleasure, so.
She's in a unique situation also as a district psychologist, where she's actually supervised by Tessa and I, but also by each of the three building principals as well. And then she mainly, you know, does their 504 meetings as well as is a support system whenever they, whenever they need anything. So I don't know if anybody has anything that they want to add to it.
Laura, I'll jump in slow. I just want to use that same word that, that Tessa used, in thoroughness. She's very thorough and quite frankly, so detail-oriented. She runs some tough meetings in chairing our 504s, especially at the high school level. But no one leaves those meetings not understanding exactly what happened in that meeting. If, if a student has, has been given a section 504 plan, that, that, that plan is articulated in detail. And if a child doesn't qualify, the parents and the child leaves that meeting understanding why. So, you know, she, she is definitely a gem in our district, and I highly support what Tessa and Laura have already said.
I also want to just jump in here in regard to Allison for tenure. One of the things that makes Allison so unique is that she has a very large heart. And even when she's not physically in our building, everybody feels it. And one story that I can share from Hillside is that we also have had some, you know, more challenging meetings. And Allison has a way of making sure that every single voice is heard. She is able to listen to every single educator and also the parent and help everybody to find common ground. And that's a very unique attribute of hers. So I fully support Laura and Tessa's recommendation for tenure. I know that Allison is going to help pull us and grow us, and we are very lucky to have her here.
Just want to briefly add, I've actually only officially worked with Allison in one 504, but I've collaborated with her so many times. It's through phone calls or emails, which I think is just, it's just, I really appreciate her professionalism and willingness to talk ideas through. She's extremely intelligent and thoughtful and has a great perspective. So I really just appreciated working with her on topics that is even, even under her umbrella. She's just there to help and support as a first-year administrator in Hastings. She was a great resource, and I really appreciate that, and support their recommendation for tenure. Thank you, Allison.
So she's probably one of the most supervised staff members in the district. So on behalf of all of us, we would, you know, it would be our pleasure to recommend Allison Guiney for tenure. Allison, it's your turn.
Thank you so much. I'm, I'm so honored and humbled. I came to Hastings after making a pretty difficult decision to leave New Rochelle after being there for 10 years. This is my 18th year as a school psychologist. And I can truly say I have never felt more supported by a community and faculty and staff and students as I have in Hastings. It has been such an honor. And honestly, as an educator, I think there are few greater compliments than to have the trust and respect of your colleagues. And the fact that, you know, they've supported me through, I came to Hastings after a maternity leave. We've been through a pandemic, you know, and, and I'm new. And not being a building psychologist, it's a little bit more difficult to make those inroads. So, you know, the support of the administration, the support of the staff, the support of the families, you know, just in bringing me into the fold so quickly, has been so appreciated. And I can't thank you all enough. This is such an honor. And I, just such kind words. I should have brought tissues. I really appreciate you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. And now the board will vote on Allison.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation for tenure for Allison Guiney?
They're moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations, Allison.
Congratulations, Allison.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And we'll move on to our next candidate, who's April Brown. Will be introduced by Rudy Pietro and Melissa Hardison.
Good evening again, everyone. So.
You're unmuted.
You're unmuted. I'm sorry. I am sorry. It is my pleasure to present tonight Ms. April Brown for tenure in the area of art education. Ms. Brown holds a Bachelor of Fine Arts degree with a concentration in sculpture and a minor in art history, and also a Master's in arts in teaching art education, both from Manhattanville College. She comes to us via the Rye City School District. Ms. Brown has demonstrated over her four years a strong work ethic in her tenure here at Hastings High School. She's an active participant in all of our curricular initiatives, especially in the art department. In her four years, she has taken on many different assignments. Just to give you a few, she's taught seventh grade art, media arts, levels one and two of sculpture, levels one and two of creative construction, levels one and two of sewing construction and design, and all levels of ceramics. Ms. Brown has never shied away from taking on new opportunities in an effort to further develop her pedagogy. She continuously and tirelessly works with her colleagues to always improve the department offerings. Though her mastery of both, through her mastery of both digital softwares and the latest sculpture techniques, she has transformed and redesigned the student experience in both media arts and our sculpture elective. Ms. Brown is seen as a visionary by her department colleagues. She often suggests changes from the status quo for the department, as was the case with the introduction of our sewing design elective. With the help of the Hastings Education Foundation, Ms. Brown now enjoys a healthy enrollment in this elective. I want to say that for next year, there were over 65 students signed up for her sewing classes. In addition, Ms. Brown works hard to ensure that every student in her class has an equal experience. This is, this was not easy during this past year, given that many students were on remote instruction. I wrote on one of her observations this year, the following statement. "As you can imagine, teaching a sewing class to students in a class is already difficult, but having the majority of your class online seems like an impossibility." This was not the case in Ms. Brown's class. Students were so excited to work on their face masks. Ms. Brown created a how-to video and organized supply kits so that every student had the ability to create a face, a face mask to their own specifications. In fact, she also helped one student who was having trouble at home with her family sewing machine and solved the issue on the spot. That's who Ms. Brown is. Unbelievable energy, and she is just a true asset to Hastings High School. She continues to learn. Over the past four years, she engaged in many activities that go beyond the requirements of her official position as teacher. She has, as I said, created the course proposal and curriculum for our high school sewing elective. She was served as middle school art club advisor, sewing club advisor, high school art club advisor. She has coordinated many trips to our Pepsi Sculpture Gardens. She designed and taught workshops in the Farragut Middle School Arts Estravaganza and has also arranged for many visiting artists. It is my pleasure to present for tenure, Ms. April Brown.
So the board will now vote, will change it up a little bit before they can, before April speaks. We'll have the board to vote, and then we'll have April speak.
Great. So is there a motion to approve the tenure recommendation for April Brown?
They're moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations, April.
Thank you. Can I speak now?
Of course.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you, Lou, for your really kind words. That was a really full summary. I'm impressed you got that all in there, so thank you. I have so enjoyed being at Hastings these last four years. I really appreciate that I work in a district and with a group of people that are so encouraging of any ideas I have and really made it possible for me to work with the sewing program and make it come to life. So thank you so much for everything, and I'm so looking forward to the next 20, 25, however many. for everything and I'm so looking forward to the next twenty, twenty-five, however many years. Uh I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Our next candidate of who um will be presented for tenure is Stephanie Chalmers, who will be introduced by uh both Jennifer Spirelli and Louie Pietro.
Good evening, everyone. Uh it is with great pleasure that I get to recommend Ms. Chalmers for tenure. Uh Ms. Chalmers, Ms. Stephanie Chalmers was hired and in um June of two thousand seventeen in the tenure area of world language and she holds certificates uh for French seven through twelve. Ms. Chalmers is a graduate of Hastings School District and I think has a bit of a unique story in that she took French with Ms. Shauna Amnyat and um while she attended school here. And then as a high school senior, she did her inch internship with um her teacher and it was from there that it was confirmation that she needed, she wanted to pursue um teaching French. After teaching abroad in Normandy, uh Ms. Chalmers came back to Hastings uh to do some observation hours and ended up being a leave replacement for that same teacher that she loved in school and did her internship with Ms. Amnyat. Uh so from there, that leave replacement uh position turned into a tenure track position and we are here today. So Ms. Chalmers has been um a Hastings community member for quite some time and we are really proud to recommend her for tenure. Um when you, when you visit Ms. Chalmers' classroom um in the high school and in the middle school, she's a point four here at FMS and a point six at the high school. Uh she is constantly speaking French and really believes in immersing the students in the language. Um it was a really fun, engaging time to be in her classroom. Students are laughing, they're playing French songs, they're talking out loud with each other. There's vocabulary words. There's props. Um she's animating some of the vocabulary in French um to help the students um understand in in the foreign language. Uh lots of continuous speaking and engagement. Uh Ms. Chalmers is very dynamic in the classroom and she really uh likes to participate and to have students participate in in the lessons. Um I really appreciated how she connects with the students in the beginning of the year by asking them about a survey um to find out what their interests are and their cultural backgrounds and then uses that interest to help with planning her lessons. So if their interest is in skateboarding or zip lining, um those vocabulary words are not in the textbook. So she will provide them those vocabulary words um and help and design lessons around it so that they can be engaged and want to participate in the target language um in in the activity. So that it's a real thoughtful approach to it because she wants their their engagement. And um Ms. Chalmers is also really passionate about continuing her own learning and understanding. Um she's currently enrolled in a Saturday seminar group um on comprehensive input and growing methodology for foreign language. Um it focuses on moving language um learning away from memorization and more towards acquisition. So that really is reflective of what you see when you enter her classroom. Though I'm really pleased to recommend Ms. Chalmers for tenure tonight.
Can I just jump in real quick? Uh as Stephanie's former principal, it is really, it is really um a joy to see uh one of our graduates come back and do such a wonderful job. As the board is quite aware, Steph, this is Stephanie's first uh year at Hastings High School. She was actually in the middle school for for full time. And when we saw efficiencies in last year's budget, uh she came over and 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 took over a point six in in the in the high school. And and she's done a masterful job. So, you know, kudos all around and I highly, highly uh recommend Stephanie uh to be awarded tenure. Congratulations, Stephanie.
Now we'll have uh the board vote and then that'll be followed by um Stephanie uh having an opportunity to share a few third thoughts.
Great. Is there a motion to approve the tenure recommendation for Stephanie Chalmers?
They're moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Great. Congratulations, Stephanie.
Hi, good evening. Um it's okay for me to speak now, I guess. Thank you so much. Um I I've always been so grateful for Hastings for their French program. I I literally would not be here if it weren't for the educators that this district hired in the past, some of whom are still here. Um some of whom I've had the um bittersweet pleasure of replacing now, but um I am so honored to be a part of this team now and to continue my career here. Um so just, just thank you so many times.
Thank you, Stephanie. Um our next candidate uh for tenure recommendation is Rebecca Mokler and uh she will be presented by Louie Pietro and Melissa Hardison.
Hey, hello again. Rebecca Mokler, uh member of our high school mathematics department, holds a Bachelor of Science in Adolescence Education and Mathematics from SUNY Oneonta and a Master in Science in Math Education from CUNY Leamington College. In addition to, prior to coming to Hastings, she did some work at both neighboring Dobbs Ferry High School and Nanuet Senior High School. Ms. Mokler's experiences both prior to Hastings and during her tenure here have been invaluable to her being able to seamless seamlessly assimilate to our community. Over the past four years, Ms. Mokler has taught algebra, algebra two, geometry, AIS, and a course in quantitative reasoning in our HASP program. Ms. Mokler utilizes varied teaching styles in order to differentiate for her students. Her instruction focuses on making math both relevant and fun. Her continued focus is to motivate her students, especially those who have struggled in the past. She understands that mo- the most important piece of good teaching is the ability to connect with her students. She has done this well and I would consider to this to be a relative strength for Ms. Mokler. Ms. Mokler has always and continues to find that proverbial spark in her students and often relates mathematics to their lives outside of school. Ms. Mokler has been able to show success to our most vulnerable and fragile students. She has demonstrated this in her work with her students in the HASP program. Ms. Mokler continuously looks for opportunities to mentor students to look past their obstacles and to focus on their future. Ms. Mokler also encourages students to feel safe making errors or even asking questions. Students understand this and often are encouraged to be a part of their lesson. She create creates an environment of respect and rapport. As stated previously, Ms. Mokler works to build relationships as the cornerstone of her philosophy on education. With this in mind, Ms. Mokler has the ability to engage all her students in a special way. Sorry, guys, that's my phone. Okay. In addition, these relationships and her ability to engage his, her students transcend the classroom. As a peer leadership advisor, these skills are front and center. With the pandemic, there came a need to adjust and the, and she not only, not only only was able to pivot, was also able to engage her students in the classroom, but also those via home. Ms. Mokler was able to not only achieve this, but went above and beyond to stay connected with her students. Ms. Mokler is a member of the district mathematics committee. She's an advisor to the high school mathematics club. She is also a peer leadership advisor. She has coached field hockey and she's a member of our HASP advisory board. It's my pleasure to recommend Mr. Rebecca Mokler to be awarded tenure.
The board will vote unless Melissa Hardison, unless you had anything to add, I didn't want to leave you out.
Actually, I just want to say for all three of our candidates, Stephanie, April and Rebecca, it's been such a pleasure working with them and seeing how they interact with our students. Our our kids absolutely love them and to me, that's, that's the most important thing. They're fair. Um they hold high expectations and they've built a really great rapport with our kids, which is so special. So thank you, guys, and congratulations.
Thank you, Melissa. So I'll now turn it over to the board for a vote.
Yes. Is there a motion to approve the tenure recommendation for Rebecca Mokler?
They're moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations, Rebecca.
Congratulations, Rebecca. It's your turn to speak.
Thank you so much. Um thank you, Lou and Melissa, for those kind words. This is such an amazing milestone in my career. I've been so happy here over the last four years and look forward to many more in the district. A special shout out to the high school math department, Greg Stevens, Lou and Melissa for their guidance over the last four years. I'm so lucky to have such a supportive um group of colleagues to look up to. Thank you again.
Thank you, Rebecca. And uh now we'll have um Laura Sullivan introduce uh Tesfa Stewart as a candidate, uh one of our administrators, uh Assistant Director of Special Education for tenure.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Uh it is an honor to speak to you tonight about Tesfa Stewart. I thought long and hard about how to highlight Tesfa's accomplishments during his time at Hastings and quickly realized I would be talking for hours. When you have a moment, I would encourage you to read Tesfa's tenure recommendation, which is attached to the Board of Education docs as it speaks to all the amazing things Tesfa has contributed to the district. Tonight, I'm going to share with you three words that I believe describe Tesfa as a person. Honor, integrity, and loyalty. The definition of honor is adherence to what is right or to a conventional standard of conduct. Tesfa is a model of honor. He puts children's needs first and foremost in decision-making. When we speak endlessly about the development of programs and services, Tesfa remains grounded in what is best for the students. He's collaborative while equally balancing out his role as a leader. He's respectful of others' ideas, but also not afraid to challenge. He is patient, understanding, and encouraging. He is willing to go above and beyond for students, staff, and the community. Tesfa chairs and participates on numerous committees, provides professional learning opportunities, and has served as an informal mentor to several staff members that have reached out for guidance over the past four years. The definition of integrity is a quality of being honest and having strong moral principles, moral uprightness. Tesfa is committed to creating an environment in which all students can learn. Through this process, he is open and honest about what he believes is the best for the student. He's not argumentative, but rather collaborative with a strong ability to compromise, as long as it doesn't negatively affect the student. Tesfa is authentic to the truest of forms. I don't think he knows even how to lie or to be fake. He values people's time and thus he is direct and to the point. Tesfa's hum, Tesfa is humble and often forgets his own worth and impact on those around him. Recently, a parent and I nominated Tesfa for the Real Men Teach Award. This organization focuses on raising money to provide scholarships for young black men in their pursuit of careers in education. He will be highlighted on their Instagram page soon. What a well-deserving award for such a gentleman. Loyalty. The definition of loyal is giving or showing firm and constant support or allegiance to a person or institution. Tesfa is loyal to the success of our students and staff. He thinks outside of the box to problem solving. This is a driving factor and model for others to follow. Tesfa will support and provide unwavering guidance when needed. He has a wealth of information and many people seek him out for his advice and opinions. From the first day we started working together, he has been the backboard in which I can sound off ideas and dreams. His daily support, regardless of the situation, is always grounded in positivity, loyalty, and strength for all. Tesfa is so much more than just the Assistant Director of Special Education. He is a true friend. Aside from my husband and my children, he's probably one of the first people I speak to in the morning and the last in the evening. Actually, my family is on this call as well tonight. Both of my daughters are signed in from their respective colleges and my son and husband say hi.
Hey, Debra.
Are sitting next to me as they are just as excited as I am to be able to recommend Tesfa for tenure. They are beyond grateful for all the moral support he is, he has and continues to ride since his arrival to the district. So it is with great pleasure that I ask you to please accept my recommendation for Mr. Tesfa Stewart to receive tenure.
I think Melissa Simansky and I also want to chime in since we um also have um had the pleasure of seeing um Tesfa uh in his um role, a very skilled role as a Assistant Director of Special Education. Uh Tesfa is um a consummate advocate for for students with IAPs. He looks for their assets and he believes that they can succeed beyond whatever the label happens to be and that it's uh his job to make sure that they succeed and that he, you know, um creates an environment where students can, you know, meet uh the expectations of uh the learning program uh with, you know, all the appropriate supports that enable them to eventually become independent and successful through their own assets. Um he is a deep um, you know, source of knowledge and expertise with regards to educating students with IAPs and that expertise is often understated, but all you have to do is spend a few minutes with Tesfa to know what he brings to his role and what he brings to the district. Um it is um um a pleasure to have met Tesfa and a joy to truly see uh that students are going to benefit from what he brings and continues to bring to the school district.
I would like to add a few things and affirm what's already been said. So I remember back to when I joined this district some years ago and it was really right at the beginning. And Tesfa, you were the first person that I really heard speak here in terms of giving a presentation. And I was very impressed by not only your level of expertise, but also the passion with which you delivered it. So that really stands up in my mind as my earliest experience coming to Hastings. You constantly maintain high expectations for all students. You are committed to consistently elevating student voice and independence. You work in a way that's solutions-focused. You are not afraid of having difficult conversations to be able to get there and you're al- always committed to creating inclusive learning environments. And it is my pleasure to work with you. Thank you.
Now we'll have the board vote.
Is there a motion to approve the tenure recommendation for Tesfa Stewart?
They're moved.
And a second? All in favor? Congratulations, Tesfa.
Congratulations, Tesfa. Now it's your turn to speak.
Thank you. Um if you just, I won't take up too much time and hijack the meeting, but I don't know if I'm ever going to get an audience like this. So I just want to say a few things. Um you know, I just want to thank everybody I've worked with, administrators, teachers, psychologists, TAs, cafeteria staff, you know, everybody I've had the, you know, uh pleasure of working with here, you know, um. Hastings has provided, you know, a lot for me, you know, um and one of the things outside of the realm of special education is the relationships that I was able to uh develop here. Whether that is teacher relationships, relationships with um parents, you know, that that goes a long way and that, you know, it helps with the job to, you know, that that trust is formed and that doesn't come overnight. That comes from, you know, lots of conversations and actions. And, you know, I try to model myself where my actions speak louder than my words and, you know, for every family that I've worked with, you know, I want to thank you and, you know, um Valerie, you know, I want to thank you as well for your mentorship. Laura, I've never had a supervisor, you know, like you and, you know, I've learned so much from both of you. Melissa, thank you as well, um even from Charlie and Tony, you know, I I definitely it had the pleasure of working with, you know, both of those gentlemen and, you know, I I can't speak highly enough. Um, you know, our special education department, Alexine, Beth, Teresa, you know, they help keep everything afloat. So, you know, all the work that it seems like Laura and I are doing, that cannot be done without them. They are the lifeblood of, you know, the department and, you know, working here, I was able to do things outside of special education, like I said, you know, and a lot of work with the diversity committee, the student affinity group, you know, I don't know if another district would allow me to spread my wings like that and you know, I had the pleasure of working with your niece and the kids in that, because those groups, you know, when you work in a district capacity, you don't have that much time to interact with students. So outside of me going into classrooms and I love going to classrooms, you know, that is my prime time to get in tune with the student body and, you know, that's invaluable. Um in closing, you know, I I I, you know, I'm not supposed to be here, you know, I'm I'm my parents are immigrants, my father got deported, you know, I was born in the South Bronx, so I'm not supplying, you know, yeah, it's hard work, but it's a lot of luck and I'm an outlier and I want people to understand that if there's somebody like me, you know, you you, you can get to where you need to be. And if there's anybody who ever said, all right, you don't belong here or you don't fit a certain profile or anything like that, do not pay attention to that. You can make something of yourself. So if you don't fit in a certain box, disregard that. You have to keep pushing through whether you have an IEP, whether, whatever way you stand out, you can be something. whether, whatever way you stand out, you can be something here. So, you know, and for everybody who's othered or stands, I have your back and I will eternally have your back as long as I'm here. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you Tespa.
Congratulations Tespa.
And finally, the, I have the pleasure of introducing Andrew Wendell, who will be recommended for tenure in his role of Director of Health Physical Education and Athletics. So I'll start and Melissa Samansky and I have the pleasure of spending a lot of time with Drew and learning about, you know, his wealth of not only resources, but his commitment to all the children in Hastings. So before he became interim this school year, Drew was a very successful physical education teacher and coach for 26 years with 23 of those years spent here in Hastings and three spent in the Greenberg Grand School District. From 2002 to 2008, Drew served as the Athletic Director for the district. These experiences played a significant role and in terms of the successes he's amassed and the talents that he brings to his, his role as Director of Physical Education, Health, and Athletics. In a good year, the role of Director of Physical Education, Health, and Athletics is difficult. This last year, this year that Drew chose to, to serve in the interim role has been a year like none other, like no other. Drew demonstrates every time that we meet with him, Melissa and I, his ability to establish a vision and a mission of physical education, health, and athletics, which was to focus on the safety of children, to motivate them and to make sure that they were healthy both mentally and physically. He transitioned to his role during the COVID pandemic knowing that he had to master and also muster his talents, you know, in terms of being creative about how to take very physical activities, both the health, physical education, and athletics, and use his sense of, you know, being nimble and being able to sort of, you know, adjust very quickly in this school year. And it was probably one of those challenging times of his career, but you would never, ever know that because the man never complains about what he does and what he has to do, even if it means he has to undo it and redo it many times. Drew approached the school year with a lot of competitive spirit and he took on the challenge much like he would take on an opponent in an athletic competition. He set out to establish high-quality learner-centered instruction and athletic programs, and athletic programs, all while transforming norms associated with physical activities in a, in, which are in complete conflict with, you know, the safety practices that we all have to follow under the pandemic. Leading the department that brings excitement to students, you know, is something that, you know, he takes to heart and wants to make sure and get everything possible to make sure that children had joy and found joy in physical education, health, and athletics. Drew managed numerous revisions to his plans, which highlighted his penchant for keeping details organized and communicating these changes in a calm and reassuring manner. His students engaged in meaningful learning and participated in athletic programs within the limitations that he really had nothing, you know, to do other than to keep pushing forward, trying to make those things happen. All of these sorts of shifts that occurred, you know, throughout the, over the course of this school year, obviously had to be frustrating, but Drew was a consummate professional and, and all he focused on was how to do the best that he could do with what he had and how to make sure that every student who, who came into their physical education class or their athletic program, no matter how short the season was, left there, you know, excited and happy that they had an opportunity to participate. Drew was able to work with multiple and diverse groups of stakeholders in defining, promoting, and protecting the welfare and safety of students and staff within and beyond the school buildings. His expertise in attracting talented coaches is unmatched. And throughout this turbulent school year, Drew focused on creating conditions that allowed students, faculty, and coaches to work in a safe environment where changes and adaptations were a regular part of the department. He always focused on building and maintaining a safe, caring, and healthy school environment to meet the academic, social, emotional, and physical needs of the students. There's no one who's more organized than Drew, more methodical, more careful, which is why there was never a need to worry about any detail being overlooked. His professionalism, his judgment, his work ethic, and his integrity are impeccable. His successes as a physical education, health, and athletic department leader were met with the priority which focused on making sure the students participated as fully as they possibly could. And at, and at the end of the day, they were very happy to have participated in the shortened athletic seasons and also to, to be free and to enjoy their, their physical education classes and all the creative ways that he made that happen, from fishing to hiking and all the things in between that certainly were not the typical activities associated with physical, physical education. But Mr. Wendell and his talented team were able to pull that off.
I would just like to add, and it's certainly hard to follow all of that. I can only affirm all of that. Drew, it has been a pleasure to work with you. I think one of the things that stands out most for me is that you are consistently good-natured and your relationships are very strong because of that. You approach things with care and with really trying to understand. You make sure that you are communicating in a way that is really purposeful and that you are consistently reflective. So that's been especially highlighted during the pandemic when there have been so many different versions of everything and trying out so many new things. It's really been a pleasure to see you step back, reflect, and really process everything to think about how we make it better the next time around. And you maintain a consistently successful high bar for yourself and for others. It's also been really wonderful to see the way in which you are able to help be a thought partner with other people. So we were able to create the first outdoor performance experience through the theater department and that was largely in part to your collaboration, working together with Gerard Marciano and thinking about what worked in athletics and how we could connect that to theater. And so being able to be a thought partner and creating that sense of community, both within the health department, the physical education departments, and across departments has really been invaluable. So I want to say thank you and really support that it's a pleasure to work with you.
Turn it over to the board for vote.
Is, is there a motion to recommend, to, in support of the recommendation for Drew Wendell for tenure?
I'm moved.
And a second.
I can.
All in favor? Congratulations Drew.
Congratulations Drew, and it's your turn to speak.
Thank you so much. I would like to thank the entire Hastings community for welcoming me into the Hastings family for the past 20 years. You all believed and trusted in me with your children and I truly appreciate that. I also would like to thank the Board of Education, Valerie Henning-Piedmont, and the entire administrative staff for their support, respect, and belief in me to make part of, to make me part of their administrative team. I must also thank the entire Hastings staff for all the wonderful years shared as colleagues and friends. I've had the pleasure of working with the best educators and hardest workers around. I finally must thank my wife and my kids for putting up with me and understanding the long nights and shared, sharing, sharing my time with them. Without their support, I would never have made it this far. I promise you all that I, I will continue to work hard and will always put your children first and be there for anyone and everyone who needs me. Hastings is a huge part of my life, one I would never trade for anything. I am honored for this opportunity and humbled by the kind words you shared about me. I want to thank you all. Thanks.
I think a final congratulations for all of the candidates. I know that later, at the start of next school year, there will be a celebration for all of you. So that's something nice to look forward to with your colleagues. Congratulations all.
Congratulations everyone. And enjoy the rest of your evening.
Lauren, before we move on, can I just say something to the people who are on the screen? I want to say that as a board member, this is always one of the most wonderful things that we do when we grant tenure for people. And it's such a wonderful feeling to sit and hear about the people who are being proposed for tenure and to hear what they bring to the district. It's very, it's full of life and it's really exciting and it's, it's so powerful to, this week, I think, because of it being Teacher Appreciation Week. I think the timing of it is wonderful and I, I want to say to all the, both to Allison, April, Stephanie, Rebecca, Tespa, and to Drew, you are clearly bringing wonderful things to our district and you're joining, you're joining a wonderful and outstanding group of teachers who will be part of your Hastings family. And obviously administrators who are here, most of them here tonight. Just an outstanding group of people who make Hastings the very special place that it is. You know, we all can have our issues, but in the end, this is a place that is really, I think, quite a special place to be and to teach and to work with your colleagues and to have an influence on the lives of, of the children who come through the school. So thank you all. It's really quite exciting. You give us a thrill.
Thank you, Jody. Those are really kind words. Dr. Henning-Piedmont, we can go on to announcements.
Thank you so much, Ms. Berman. We do have a few administrators. We have the three principals who I'm going to ask to speak in a moment, but I wanted to just reinforce a couple of announcements and then have a bit of a conversation about the barriers, the desktop barriers and the floor barriers that are used, and table barriers that are used in our classrooms. So first.
Interrupt one second. For some reason you're, maybe it's just me. I don't know if anyone else is hearing it, but I'm hearing you really garbled. I'm not sure if it's your connection or if there's another speaker you maybe have or.
Let's see here. Still not?
Still, still kind of garbled coming through.
Okay, so. See if I can do this. Do this. Can I start with the principals while I figure out my audio issues? So I asked the principals each to tell their faculty and staff about the use of the barriers. And I asked them to, if they could, obtain some feedback on whether the barriers should be transitioned out for the next eight weeks, whether they should be removed altogether, or whether we should keep them until the end of the school year. So I'd like to start with Louis Pietro and then Jasper Sporelli and then Amy Kazes. Go right ahead and I'll figure out my audio issues.
Okay, thanks Valerie. Okay, good evening everyone. As Valerie stated, we were asked to solicit some feedback from our staff regarding the use of barriers. And for those of you who know, at the high school, our staff members and our students were the first to kind of abandon the barriers, the original barriers, back at the beginning of the year. So we got together as principals and we developed a short, quick survey that asked three basic questions. One was, you know, should we keep the barriers up until the end of the year at the very minimum? Should we transition and remove the barriers over time and more specifically through the month of May? Or should we remove those barriers immediately? And it, the data that we got was, was pretty telling and I could speak for the high school data. We had 54, 54 staff members respond to the survey at the high school, which is representative of about 90% of our staff. And we had the following data to report. Of the 54 respondents, 27 said that we should remove those barriers immediately. So that represents 50% of the staff who felt there was no need to have the barriers. We had 15 staff members or 27.8% of our staff feel that we should transition those, out of those barriers over the course of the next month of May. So altogether, there was approximately 70, almost 78% of the staff members at the high school who felt that by the end of May, we should be removing all of the barriers. And then we had 22% or 12 respondents at the high school feel that we should keep those barriers up through the end of the year at the very, very minimum. I do want to tell you though, that some of the anecdotal information that we collected as well, because we left the field there and the other principals will discuss their schools as well. And then we'll talk together about our recommendation moving forward. Some, most of that feedback, even the, even the, those who responded that we should keep the barriers up felt that the barriers are not really there for any scientific reason, but more as a reminder to students and to staff about social distancing. And it is a constant reminder for, for all of us that we need to maintain our distance from one another. I think that was the main reason that most people felt that the barriers should be staying up. There really were no, no one responded in that the barriers were scientifically proven to keep, to keep the infection away. With that in mind, I'm going to, I'm going to let the, the other two buildings kind of talk about their data and then we'll come back together and talk about what we feel as a recommendation moving forward. Jennifer?
Thank you Lou. So for Farragut Middle School, when we sent out our survey, we had 42 respondents. So definitely about a little more than three quarters of our staff did respond. And again, the, the data was, was very telling. It's the same three questions, same survey. In regards to keep the barriers up until the end of school, so keeping them up with 17 individuals or about 40% said that. And then the two other categories, transitioning to remove them over the, the next eight weeks, that was four individuals or 9.5%. And then the last category is the removal of all barriers immediately and that was 21 individuals, 50%. So if we look at it in that also, about 60% of the individuals that responded to the survey do want the barriers gone by, by the end of the year, whether it's transitioning or immediately. And Lou touched upon some of the other more anecdotal feedback. And again, the middle school didn't have anyone saying to keep them because of any scientific data. It was definitely more of a psychological. And for medical, middle school students too, it is a reminder of social distancing. It is a reminder that we are still in a COVID year. It is a reminder of some of the safety precautions that we have, even with our signs and our announcements and our labeling in the hallway, monitoring of the hallway, it's, it's still a reminder. So that was one of the pros of having it because we still want to make sure everyone is following our safety precautions. But in regards to it being a safety hazard in class, students have their backpacks. There's some tripping, you know, and when some of my class visits, they fall down and knock into them. So we're, we're trying to problem solve with that as well. So there, there is definitely mixed feelings in it. But for the most part, it was that we would be better off with 60% of the respondents saying not having them. I'll turn it over to Amy.
Thanks Jen. Good evening everyone. So I'm going to present the information for Hillside. Though Hillside was consistent with middle school and high school, I think that what you'll see based on our data is that more people at Hillside are feeling that the barriers are helpful. And it has to do with the young age of our children. At Hillside, the, the response was actually quite low. We had 56 respondents, which is about half of our staff, that responded to the survey. 24 individuals voted to keep the barriers up until the end of the year. So that's about 42.86%. The transition to the removal of the barriers, 10 individuals voted, about 17.86%. And then in regard to removing the barriers altogether, 22 individuals voted, 39.29%. Our faculty and staff felt that not only were these barriers a visual reminder, but for our young children, it helps them to define their space. So many of our children are sitting collaboratively at tables together and the barriers are like a giant plus sign sitting in the middle of the table that very clearly outlines the space for each individual child. What we did recognize is that a child who is sitting at a What we did recognize is that a child who is sitting at a desk that has an individual barrier, if those barriers are, if those desks are three feet apart and the child is seated, but that barrier could come down while the child is, you know, sitting there for instruction. But at any other time, the barrier would go up. So for example, if the child's having snack, the child was having lunch, and the barrier would go up for those types of things. But that would only be if there's three feet of distance between the desks. Some of the concerns in regard to the barriers were the, really the vision, right? The ability for students to be able to see. And there are some barriers that are better than other barriers, but nonetheless, even our clear barriers do have a glare. So that was some of the concern. But ultimately, what we feel at Hillside, based on the numbers that we have, is that we really want to be able to put in place the plan that respects everyone. And what we recognize at Hillside is that there are still a number of staff members that feel more comfortable having barriers up. And there are some, there are many students that feel more comfortable having barriers up as well. So I know that Lou, you wanted to wait until the end for all of us to discuss what our thinking is. I don't know if we all want to unmute and share, but at Hillside, what we feel is the best decision is that the barriers will stay in place when three feet of social distance is not possible. And when three feet of social distance is possible, at that point, it will be up to the teacher or student if they're comfortable taking their barrier down for instruction. But again, all barriers would be up for lunch and for snack. And, you know, we feel that this is really respectful of all of our, you know, people in our community, of both our students and our staff members.
Yeah, I'm going to jump in. And for the high school, I mean, we have a similar kind of recommendation moving forward. And I'm going to tell you that it's actually what's happening currently. When, when there is enough distance in the classrooms, our teachers are already taking some of those barriers down or, and/or students are taking those barriers down. You know, the high school is also, you know, the school that has, you know, probably 30 or 40% of our student population being vaccinated currently. And that number is going to rise with the, the announcement that we're going to go down to 12 years old and up soon. So, you know, I'd like to follow the same recommendation as Amy with a couple of exceptions. Understand that our lab tables in our science department and math department, there's no way you can get three feet of social distancing on those tables. So there are going to be Plexiglas dividers on those tables. And that's a non-negotiable. It's just, it's just the design of the table. So, and those barriers are not barriers that can be removed and put down on the floor at any given moment. We're talking about the personal dividers that are on individual desks that are really the ones that could be moved at any given point. Also understand that, you know, the, the warm weather is coming. Our windows are wide open. Ventilation is not a non-issue. We've asked teachers to also keep their doors open to get that cross ventilation in and out. And then our students will have the ability, you know, our students are pretty savvy, have the ability, there'll always be barriers in the classroom. So even if, you know, a classroom has a small number of students and distancing is not an issue, if a student feels they would like to use a barrier, they have the option to use a barrier at any time. So I just love that level of flexibility. And I think that works very well for the high school.
Thanks. And for the middle school, we'd be more aligned with, with the high school. We do have lab desks as well. We have what we call our shamrock desk for, for grouping sitting in a circle. And then we also have individual desks as well. So for rooms that have, you know, nine students in a reading instruction room or a resource room or an E&amp;L pullout, there wouldn't, there would be plenty of space to spread out. And teachers do utilize the, the room to their full capacities. And in that environment, it would be wonderful to be able to say, you don't need a barrier. You're sitting more, you know, plenty of feet apart, six feet, more than three feet apart. You, you can space out without a barrier, increase your visual sight line. And that, that would be the most flexible option for staff and students to have the, those options. But back to the, the lab desk and some of our other desks, we do have the Plexiglas barriers on there as well. And with students 24 in a room utilizing those types of seating, it is impossible to have any three feet. So we would ask that they do keep those barriers on those desks as well. So we thought that this plan really does meet the needs of everyone and having, respecting everyone's decisions and comfort levels.
Thank you, Valerie, for having Amy and Lou and Jennifer speak on the barrier concerns. Were there any board members that wanted to ask any questions or get any more clarity on the recommendations that they brought to, to, for us to hear tonight?
For Hillside, Amy, you're the only school where students' age doubles while, while you get to see them. So while, you know, kindergarten and first grade, definitely it sounded beautiful, you know, here's your space, don't go over the lines. Did you probably not have enough feedback to look at it from your top grade? Your fourth grade, it sounds like with 50%, you probably only had two or teachers. Was that something you were able to look at? Or you like keeping the whole school under one policy? And even though 10-year-olds are different than five-year-olds, you're comfortable with one policy?
It's a good question, Jeremy. The big piece is the three feet of distance. It has less to do with the age and more to do with the physical structure in the classroom. So even in our fourth grade classrooms, we are set up collaboratively. So classrooms have tables. So we can't have three feet of distance at the tables, which is why those Plexiglas barriers are necessary. That being said, many of our upper grade classrooms that have desks also, the tables can only fit four students. And some of our classes have 22 and 23 students in them. So four tables, four students at a table, that's 16 students at tables. Those will continue to have the Plexiglas barriers. But then when there are extra desks brought into the classroom where students are sitting to make up the extra seats from 16 up to 21, 22, 23, those desks, there are three feet of distance, they are able to take those barriers down. And like Lou said, we've been doing that now and that's working out just fine.
I just want to comment that I really appreciate that you surveyed the teachers to get their input on this decision. And as it is their, their working environment and their comfort level in terms of having all students in the building and, you know, getting their feedback and being able to be flexible in response to that feedback is noted. So thank you. Valerie, you're muted. And hopefully now we can't hear you.
Let's try this. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So thank you so much, Lou and Jennifer and Amy for spending the time obtaining information from your faculty and staff who, you know, are the people who have, I think, the most interest in, you know, making the decision because they are the ones in the classrooms with the students. I also wanted to share just some information about where we are with regards to active cases in Hastings. So as of May 3rd, there are eight active cases of COVID in Hastings. In terms of, you know, where we were from September of last year to now, at Farragut, there have only been 17 students who have tested positive for a total of 26, which include teacher, staff, and students. So that's from September of last year until now. At the high school, total of six students. And that's, and they've been no teachers or staff, just six students. At Hillside Elementary Schools, nine students, but a total of 19, which include teachers and staff. So that's important information in terms of the metrics that we are, we should be considering as we look at, you know, relaxing if we, you know, any of the current practices that, that Lou, Jennifer, and Amy described. And as you know, we have 94% in-person attendance, 94%. And since we opened, we opened to all students on April 12th, there've been two cases. There's, there was a case the first week, the week of April 12th and that following week. And we haven't had any students who have been quarantined to test positive. That is significant because that's also an indicator of, you know, transmission rate and level. So that is a pretty incredible, you know, number to look at. So, you know, it's a testament to all the efforts that everyone's been engaged in, every adult everywhere who's been watchful, mindful, every student who's been watchful and mindful and, you know, and have taken this, this virus seriously and tried to make sure that the learning environment is maintained because, trust me, they want to be in the schools. We love to hear their happy, you know, screeches, especially if they're middle school students. Those, those, those screeches of joy and, you know, the fun they have outside during recess or, or students who are just walking in the hallway. So I think everyone appreciates being in the building. In terms of the surveillance testing that was just started this, on, on yesterday, we only received 159 consent forms. And this is after, you know, outreach on multiple occasions. And our incredible nurses have already started that, started administering the By Next Now test to 5% of those students in each school who, whose parents consented. And so far, there's been no student who's, who's tested positive. All have tested negative. Now, as I said, it's a small sample size, but the, the nurses are going to administer the test and to different students to make sure that we at least use the sample size of 159 that we actually have. And I guess all of that is to just punctuate, you know, you know, that, you know, we are committed to the efforts that are underway to make sure that students are in schools, to make sure that everyone is safe, all of our adults and all of our children in, in the schools. And obviously all the families, because the children have to go home. Our faculty and staff have to go home. So we don't want anyone, you know, on account of anything that we do that, that, you know, that demonstrates that we're not taking this completely seriously, that, that there's some negative outcome. We also don't want any of the end-of-year activities that are planned to be impacted. So, you know, there's a high degree of, of, you know, interest in making sure that, you know, decisions, you know, are, are, you know, entered in with that sort of in mind. You know, as we get very close to some of these important end-of-year activities, one, you know, one's coming up that involves the high school and that's prom, you know, that will be outside. And so we just want to make sure that, you know, that, that the children do recognize that those barriers, as we know, they're not part of the mitigation strategy, which is, you know, what the three principals have vindicated. But they are a precautionary measure. They are a way to, to make sure the students pay attention to, you know, to the space and their own space within the classroom environment. So once again, I'm going to thank everyone. Thank you, principals, for being here. Thank you, all faculty and staff. Maureen and Jo and all the members of the team who do just an incredible job and have continued to do an incredible job this school year. And thank you, obviously, to the Board of Education for your patience and all of the different iterations and efforts to keep our schools open.
Thank you, Valerie. And again, thanks to each of the principals for presenting that information to us tonight. We can move on to the administrative comments. Melissa Samansky.
Good evening, everyone. First, some congratulations are in order to add to the wonderful congratulations from our tenure ceremony earlier. Congrats to Kaylee Oppenheimer and Bryce Jacobs, you may have seen in the Hastings Daily, who have been selected as finalists in the Regeneron International Science Engineering Fair Competition. So that is a huge accomplishment. Congratulations to all who have been involved with the Hastings High School production of All Shook Up. And as I mentioned before, we were delighted this was able to happen outdoors and live. Special thanks to Gerard Marciano, Lori Walton, and Gillian Huzowski for all the extra attention and efforts related to safety protocols in addition to their incredible work with the production. And of course, thank you to Lou. He and I have been behind the scenes working to support that as well. Middle school mathematics. Alongside the work of the K-12 Mathematics Committee, a number of us have been exploring mathematics resources in preparation for a pilot next year in grades six through eight. And the indicators that were developed by the K-12 Mathematics Committee that articulate the group's shared vision for mathematics are being used to anchor our middle school resource discussions. So for example, at our most recent session, participants worked within small group breakout rooms to identify evidence of the extent to which one of the resources we were looking at aligned to the various indicators. And then we came back together and unpacked that together. So that work is currently in process. The focus for the most recent Chair Council meeting centered on unpacking a culturally responsive curriculum scorecard, which will provide support to determine the extent to which our resources are culturally responsive in relation to social justice orientation and representation. And we are also working with them as well as making them our own. And I would like to thank Janice Mateo Toledo in helping to support the planning for that session and behind the scenes, Dr. Dietrich Price Dennis as we are working around cultural, culturally responsive pedagogies. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Maureen?
Yes, so I'm going to, to provide an update around what I alluded to earlier, some of the federal funds that had come in right before we finally adopted our budget that, one of which I'm going to kind of focus on tonight and then give a little update on some of the other monies that are going to be available to us. So first, to address the American Rescue Plan, which we will need to conduct a hearing on at a later date, but just to kind of give you some ideas and thoughts about what, what recommendations we would make to, to use this fund. So the, the American Rescue Plan is of, the federal government allocated a grant funding to K-12 public schools as part of its recently passed stimulus package. The district anticipates receiving, we're earmarked to receive $257,000. And those funds can be expended over the upcoming 21, 22 school year as well as the following school year. Naturally, there are parameters around how these additional funds may be used. Based upon the allowable use of funds, we are required to earmark a percentage of those funds, and in this case, it's 51,000, to address implementation of evidence-based interventions that can be spread again over the next two fiscal years. Melissa will be working with the district leadership team to provide recommendations, again, at an upcoming meeting on the types of programs that can be used to develop, that can be implemented to support our learners. The remaining funds will be allocated in line with the requirements under this American Rescue Plan, which are aligned to the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965, the ESSA. So the funds can be used to, one of the abilities of the funds is to provide professional learning to our staff, to provide additional resources to support educational programs, to create equal access to education, and also to lessen achievement gaps between students. And actually, today I was reading something that said, we're trying to change the terms to say opportunity gaps instead of achievement gaps. So I'm going to adjust that when we speak about it at a later date. Additionally, the allocation of funds, so currently what we are looking at, the 257, as I had earlier mentioned, there's a need to set aside 51,000 for those evidence-based interventions. And the remainder of the allocation, we are recommending at this time to increase the release time for the district's diversity coordinator in order to support the professional learning of teachers district-wide. This allocation would be approximately $100,000 of those American Rescue funds over the next two school years. We would also, in line with the, the requirements under the grant, would recommend the increase of a point two for our math interventionist position at the Hillside School. And again, this would be approximately $45,000 for the upcoming 21, 22 in the following school year. The remainder of these funds, we are currently looking at conducting a special education program review at Hillside School as well as to provide additional professional learning to our, our teachers district-wide. And again, all of these are in, in what the allowable uses of these funds. And again, all of these are in in what the allowable uses of these funds are. So that's, you know, one of the things we want to update the board on tonight. And again, we will provide a much more formal plan that will be posted on our website. So so people have an opportunity to see what what we're earmarking those funds to be spent on. In addition to that, we also have an allocation, which is about $1.5 million. That is that part of the the stimulus package is called the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act of 2021. It is quite a long title. And, you know, we're still getting guidance around the the use of those funds. But but similar to what I just outlined earlier, much of the funds, well, some of the funds will be earmarked again for that learning loss. A lot of it, of course, is is related to the coronavirus. One of the interesting things about that, this amount of money that's being earmarked, some of it, and again, as we we learn more, and again, I don't want to put anything out there before we we really have the full understanding of it, but there is an ability to repay or or, you know, some of the expenses that we have allocated. I mean, one of them that was discussed at length tonight, the desk barriers, would be something that we may have an opportunity to either, you know, decide to to put that through the funding and that would really be a refund to the district. But and but prior to making that recommendation, currently, I'm looking into also trying to get the some of those items reimbursed through the FEMA funding, because now FEMA has changed to allow for reopening costs. So, you know, we're we're, there's a bunch of different allocations that we're that I'm working currently to sort through to bring a recommendation to the board. And again, similar to this other grant, it it's not for two full school years, but I actually read today that some districts are asking that the, it's about a year and four months, and they're asking for that to be extended a bit, because that way we can be really thoughtful in how we allocate and and use those funds over the next few years. And some, again, of the the items could be for construction on the building, again, related really to, some of it would be maybe ventilation and things such as that. But we, as the board knows, we have invested some monies there. So if there's areas in which we can recoup some of the costs, we'll apply for that, but as well as develop a plan and and present it in in the upcoming months once we get the information from the state with the real, so we can make a really informed presentation to the board. So that was my update tonight about those funds that I know Melissa and Janice are going to have a presentation that'll speak to the Diversity Inclusion Coordinator.
Can I just ask you a couple of questions, Maureen? About, just so I'm clear, is it, so it's three different pools of funding? Is that correct?
Yeah, so so there were two. I mean, FEMA has always been out there, but FEMA has recently changed to allow for some expenses that they previously were not reimbursing districts for. So on a conversation I had today and and started the grant process, there are now some opportunities to recoup some of the monies for like some of the things, such as dividers. And again, I, they don't reimburse the entirety of the cost, but these are some items that initially FEMA was not authorizing to be something that they would cover. So so yes, that that's kind of what I would say, like another pool of funding. So based upon what I think we can re get reimbursed from FEMA will help me determine what would be the record, part of the recommendation for the Coronavirus Response Relief Act monies, right? So if we can get some money from FEMA, then it won't be necessary to drive that through the the other bucket.
And have these all, so they're all kind of use it or lose it sort of things? Either two years or one?
Yeah, yes, yes. And again, you know, I actually even had a meeting today with my counterparts to, you know, everyone's kind of in the same process, of course, and talk about the Coronavirus Response Act. And again, we do have some some information and and, but again, even the state has said it, you know, they're, because the money's federal, the state, it it goes to the state and then, you know, they're required to kind of oversee, oversee to ensure that it's, I'm in compliance with the intended use of it. So we do have, we know some of it is definitely related, obviously, is is a response to. That's why it's called the Coronavirus Response. And and we're we're trying to get a really good, you know, handle on the appropriate use of that, those funds, so we can make an informed recommendation. But again, I I think once I have a an opportunity to at least submit my first application to FEMA, which I'm going to begin working on, that'll be helpful, because if there's some of the costs are picked up there, then, like I said, the Coronavirus Response Act does allow districts to go back to March 20, to go now back to March 2020, because I read that in in some of the earlier documentation, and possibly reimburse the district for some of those expenses. So I mean, I think there's there's opportunities. But again, if we can get some of those funds from FEMA, then that would allow us then to use the 1.5 million for for some some other infrastructure project, for technology, for learning laws, for, you know, whatever the, once we understand what what all the approved uses of those funds are for.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's 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 interesting, because it's it's similar to last year where we got a lot of information really late, and now we're trying to process it but also, you know, make good decisions with it, because of course, we will spend it all, you know, because we don't want to lose it. But we also want to be, you know, just really be smart about what we're recommending.
And in addition to what Maureen had just shared, you know, we're we're certainly keeping our eye on a couple of other things. And so, you know, as with any other year, we have a tiny little bit of wiggle room in the event that we have incoming ENL students that haven't been anticipated, because we we typically do. So we have a little bit of wiggle room in there now, just as we would with kindergarteners, right? As we're anticipating our numbers. But we are keeping an eye on that. And then the second thing is that, in addition to some of the professional learning that Maureen was talking about, there is an item, a business item on the board agenda this evening for two planning sessions that are happening with the teachers alongside with Dr. Dietrich Price Dennis. So thinking together about what her role will look like in the coming years will be part of a more comprehensive plan that's being developed.
Right now, and as I had mentioned, what Melissa said, so we still have money under the American Rescue Plan that can be allocated for that purpose, as well as some of some of the Coronavirus Act also can be similar to the other. I know there is a PD, you know, an ability to use some of that for that type of, those type of PD and and professional services as well. But again, we we want to make sure we have all the information first.
I really appreciate having all this information, Maureen, and and, you know, the recommendations, the preliminary recommendations that you're putting forward in terms of the $257,000 certainly seem to make sense. And I just want to share that, you know, should should the monies from the the Corona Supplement Act, the 1.5 million, that may or may not be earmarked certain ways. If it's in regard to what folks are terming learning loss, I just want to encourage the educators in the district to really think expansively and not think about drill, skill, and kill approaches to learning loss, but rather to think about collaboration between students and passion projects and socially engaging learning, because it's it's those aspects that students have been missing out on and are craving in order to reinvigorate their interest in in being at school and and building curiosity that's been lost, or maybe just dormant this past year. So I wouldn't say things are lost for students, but rather, my sense is that they're more dormant. So, you know, ways that things can be sparked by our educators and make children more excited about learning once again, I think are approaches that I hope those funds can be put toward. And I I trust that our educators can think more expansively and not just think about attaining certain skill levels, but rather really engaging and thoughtfully on how to use those monies creatively to make our students reengaged with the school district.
To support that, as Maureen indicated, the funds can be used over the course of the school year. So if there isn't an opportunity to plan for something this summer, throughout the course of the school year, there's an opportunity. And then the following summer as well. So that's the sort of good part of being able to not just, you know, focus on trying to create something in eight weeks. Looking farther into the year and into next summer is also an opportunity for, you know, for the administrators.
So I don't seem to see our student representatives on the call this evening. Am I, I just want to double check. And I know that this is a busy time of year for our students. But if the student representatives are on the call, I don't know, Melissa Deliberer, do you see them there? I just want to make sure.
Sorry, I was unmuted. No, I I was looking for them earlier. No, they're not on.
All right, thank you. And so we'll begin our first public comment period. This is an opportunity for members of the public to be invited to comment on any item on our agenda this evening. If you could please state your name and if you're a resident of Hastings. And we'll limit your comments to two minutes, please. And again, if you'd like to comment, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen, and Melissa Deliberer can call on you.
Jennifer Destin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is very, well, I'm Jennifer Destin. I'm a resident of Hastings. I know he's not even on likely now anymore, but I just had to add my personal support and 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 huge congratulations to Tessa Stewart on his tenure tonight through both my experience with him as a parent and in my role as at through SEPTA. I actually jotted down a list earlier today of things I wanted to say when I saw the announcement, and all of the words were already used. Honorable, direct, collaborative, student-focused. He is, to me, a model of what we want our district to look like. So I I think it's wonderful he received tenure and and just a huge congratulations to him and to us for for having him here, because it he really is an asset.
Thank you. I don't see any more hands raised.
Thank you, Melissa. So we do have the pleasure of a presentation this evening. Melissa Samansky and Janice Mateo Toledo.
Okay, I just need a moment to share my screen as Janice is also getting situated. Hi, Janice. Okay. Okay, so tonight, we're going to talk to you about the Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator position and the potential shift from the .6 to the 1.0 full-time equivalent. So the goals of our presentation this evening will explain the original intended purpose for the position. Then we will provide the history of the responsibilities of the Diversity Inclusion Coordinator and the related shifts that occurred from .2 to .6 FTE. We'll provide concrete examples of how the responsibilities have been actualized as a .6 with students, faculty, and members of the community. And then we'll outline opportunities if a shift to a 1.0 should occur. Finally, we'll describe the evaluation process to ensure that efforts are making a difference. So the purpose of the position. I'm going to turn it over to Janice.
Sure, so we wanted to go back a little bit, just so that we have a history of where we were and where we want to go. So back in 2017, our district was highlighted in a Lohud article. And in response, a teacher committee was formed called Race Matters. And we began discussing how to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion, and I'll call that DEI, goals in our community. And at the time, the only schools doing this work were private schools. So we began visiting schools, we began speaking to coordinators, we reached out to Horace Mann Trinity School and the Hewitt School. And we had two educators at the time, myself and Dr. Cherry Paul, who were working at Teachers College, and our work was focused on DEI. So this led us to proposing a DEI position for Hastings. And at that time, for public schools, it was new, it was a revolutionary idea. So after we did our research, we proposed the position in 2018. And this was kind of our proposal. And then in terms of the responsibilities of the position, so the position began as a .2. And the responsibilities are listed on the slide. And that year, I met with Lisa Litvin and Doug Sunheim, who were on the board. Doug is still here with us. And we discussed three particular goals. We talked about ensuring that we had an incidence of bias protocol. We talked about the importance of looking at our hiring practices. And we talked about bringing professional learning for our committee, for our community. So those were some things that we did. Tessa Stewart and Jesse Merchant led our incidence of bias protocol. Lynn Walker, the amazing Lynn Walker, led our hiring practices committee. And we 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 did a lot of things in terms of thinking about how we can recruit people of color to work in Hastings. And we thought a lot about how back in the early 2000s, Jay Russell was very influential in bringing more teachers of color in that he would attend diversity job fairs. So these were kind of things that we talked about with Lynn, and we we've moved forward with that. And of course, with the Professional Learning Subcommittee, we had Diane Goodman and Border Crossers come in to work with our teachers. So that was kind of year one. And then for our year two, because there were more expectations put on the the position, the position was increased to a .6 at this point. So along with the responsibilities we mentioned earlier, these were the additional responsibilities that were added to the position with the understanding that I'm still working in the classroom, still the ENL coordinator and the DEI coordinator as well. So I I don't think I need to read them for you, but you can clearly see that there's been, there was an increase in what was expected, whether whether it was meeting with the middle school principal and providing P. professional learning, whether it was supporting colleagues who were teaching the racial literacy courses, leading multicultural book clubs for students. And these are kind of things that we talked about when I presented to the board a few years back, if some of you may recall. So that's kind of where we were in 2019. And then the following year, our work increased again. So this year, because there had been, again, more expectations put on the district in the position, and we all know that the pandemic and the murder of George Floyd really changed the educational landscape. Iniquities were laid bare for everyone to witness. And New York State released a culturally responsive sustaining education framework that schools have been mandated to implement. And recently, Dr. Betty Rosa on the New York State Board of Regions has launched an initiative to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion goals. So as a district, we've kind of been ahead of the curve in terms of where schools are going. So this year, as you can see on the slide, I've had building responsibilities where we continue to have town halls in the high school and middle school, co-taught lessons in the classroom. I pushed in with Jennifer and had conversations with students. We have supported colleagues around the courageous conversation class and instructional strategies, and of course, designing workshops. District-wide, these are some of the responsibilities. Racial Equity Days, Hillside Racial Equity Day is coming up, but we've already launched high school and middle schools. Of course, supporting any diversity perspectives in curriculum, Superintendent's Conference Day, partnering on drafting. And again, I don't think I need to read it for you. And the third responsibility was around the Diversity Committee and providing professional learning for the committee members, where we focused on racial equity. And we are in the process of creating a toolkit, which was And we are in the process of creating a toolkit, which was Valerie's great idea, so that we can house all of our materials in one place, so that teachers will have an opportunity to use it. But it's really important for us to think about, it's not just having the materials. It's actually having someone to support teachers as they are learning this work as well. It's because this, you can read as much as you want about this work, but unless you're in conversation and having dialogue, the, you could, it just doesn't, it doesn't work. It really needs to be something that's done in community. So in terms of our, okay, Melissa, I think you're muted.
Okay, so in terms of future opportunities, 2021 and now and beyond. So additional opportunities. So what you're seeing here, a series of bullets that are meant to be associated with the 1.0, with the ones in bold being the primary areas of responsibility. So that would include partnering with teachers to investigate practice and lessons to elevate the culturally responsive sustaining education framework within content area of classrooms, pushing into courageous conversations and Sparks classes to support educators on the ground, expand opportunities to collaborate with me. I know we work regularly together, but to think about professional learning opportunities and to be able to do that on an even more regular basis. Act as a change agent to increase representation within classroom curricular materials and conversations. Identify and disseminate articles, resources and communications to deepen awareness about current events associated with power, privilege and racism. And then some additional things. DEI in-service credit offerings, designing that in partnership with faculty to provide to other faculty members. Co-hosting book clubs, a newsletter that's done on a regular basis. Supporting affinity group leaders, expanding our Racial Equity Day initiative, identifying and facilitating other DEI opportunities, workshops, conferences, organizations and events. And then coordinating with community partners and internal partners to increase awareness and enhance community offerings. So those are some of the opportunities if we move to the 1.0. And in terms of evaluation, it's very important. And this was something that I learned from Giselle Martin-Kneep, who is a brilliant educator and has a wonderful mind. And she said, you can always find a way to measure what matters. And so even when thinking about work with people, to be able to, to be able to look back at it both qualitatively and quantitatively and see what the impact is. Janice and I were talking about a variety of different ways. And Valerie had suggested a survey, which would be a perfect way. Some ongoing surveys to get the ongoing feedback of the teachers, informal interviews. So being able to hear directly from the voices of the faculty. Focus groups, ideas that are expressed, that can be tracked, conversations, shifts in behavior. That's a big one. So looking at participation and engagement, how, the extent to which resources are shifting, lesson redesigns and action-related artifacts as well, lessons, communications and reflections. So those are our thoughts about both the journey and what it can become. And we'd love your questions.
Thank you, Melissa and Janice. Can open it up to all board members to ask any questions.
This is helpful, thank you. I know there was talk, I know Jeremy and Valerie, you guys were talking last board meeting about other opportunities kind of outside the campus and outside the buildings. And I'm just wondering if those were discussed or how those might be playing into future plans.
Because Janice is, you know, Janice's time is limited. Janice was never, you know, and I know she didn't have, you know, time to give to the project. She wasn't a part of the discussion about the program, the initiative with Yonkers. But teachers who had had experience with the program, when it was the Borges Program, were the ones who were engaged with. But I do think it makes sense, you know, for all of the, you know, DEI efforts to come under one umbrella. So in a, you know, in a full-time capacity, you know, it would make a lot of sense, you know, for there to be this thread across all the work. And, you know, and Janice could be that, that person who's threading all this work throughout the school system and partnering with, you know, not, you know, our neighbor Yonkers, but, you know, looking at and cultivating other opportunities so that there is, you know, affinity within the affinity of, you know, of people who are working across, you know, this work and really trying to make sure that, you know, they're creating sustainable ways, you know. So what we don't want to, you know, sort of do is create something that only one person is tasked with nurturing, right? You know, I would imagine that you want to, you know, think about like, how do you build this? And having, as Janice said, not just someone to help create a toolkit, but to really be the person helping to, you know, to continue to deepen the conversation, you know, in the school district. And that's really a critical part of this work. So that would be one of the ways that that conversation can be further, you know, sort of, you know, deepened and cultivated is by having Janice involved with that, with the Neighbors Project.
Thanks, thanks Valerie. And what I can, what I can share is, I, you know, I think this is a good idea. I think the, you know, the continuing, continuing involvement, both of the role and the work, which I think will kind of go hand in hand. And I think is, is, is critical. I mean, to say that we were a leader three or four years ago. The world is evolving so quickly. You just being in the corporate world, I can tell you over the last nine and 10 months. I mean, the entire framework and way that people are thinking about things. And Jody can say in higher ed, it's very similar in a very good way. And so I think we need the time and energy and effort and focus in order to continue to evolve in that direction. And the one thing I would say, I know this was kind of a weird year for obvious reasons. But, you know, really keeping the board involved, I think is going to be critical. You know, a couple of times a year at least, even if it's not, you know, a formal survey or some formal assessment. But just some of the richer kind of narrative dialogue stuff. You know, really hearing some of the, kind of the evolution of those stories. Because I do think that it's so easy for a lot of this stuff to kind of get put into, you know, boxes of, you know, this training or that training. But the real kind of in-depth, you know, if you think of like an anthropological perspective, that, you know, the deep descriptions of the evolutions and how the work is going. I think it's really important for the board, it's really important for the community to understand and really understand how these programs are not just being shared or being rolled out, but how they're impacting and those, that really descriptive work, I think is going to be critical. And, and I would think, you know, both with Melissa and Janice, you know, at some point, I think it's really important that it's not like this separate thing, right? It's really embedded in everything that we're doing. And because that's the reality of what it should be. It shouldn't be, you know, a separate kind of discipline. So it would also be interesting to understand over the course of the coming couple of years, you know, how we can begin to do that and what that looks like is, you know, is more part of the, part of that story. So those are just some high-level thoughts that I have.
Just a quick question for Maureen. I know Melissa Samansky mentioned earlier that she said there's some wiggle room. If we do get more English language learners into the district, does that mean that maybe if we did have another person or two beyond the coverage that's already allotted, would federal funds be able to cover?
Yeah, so, so the quick, the quick answer is yes. So I think again, you know, anytime we would have that opportunity in that, that's why, you know, still having the ability of that other pool of funds is also, you know, it puts us in a good position to make the recommendations we are this evening because we do have that other $1.5 million. And again, similar to the uses of the other funds, as Melissa had mentioned. And again, it is something that, it is really important when we, you know, outside of what we're recommending tonight in our own budget, we always want to ensure that we do have, if possible, you know, some capacity for children to come in. And again, I mean, I, Janice has like schooled me on this whole thing. It is very, you know, I could talk about it for a long time, but yes, we always want to make sure we have that capacity. But to your point, you know, this may be a year in which there could be a need to, you know, amp that up, you know, if needed. And having that $1.5 million also, you know, that we'll be discussing over the next few months. I think the good news is then we'll have, we'll have a better understanding of who may be with us next year. And we'll also have those funds. So that is another layer that we still have and that, that we can, if needed, tap into.
I also just wanted to speak in favor of some of the things that went on this year. I know there were the, Valerie, I saw you and Tespa at some of the student groups where they were just talking about the climate in the schools and, and just anything that they might be encountering. And in addition to what you were saying, Doug, about it eventually folding into the curriculum, you know, those sorts of things seem really valuable as well to sort of gauge how kids are feeling in real time. You know, as we take steps forward. Are they feeling any of that impact? Are there any changes, you know, in the climate surveys that were given, whenever that was? I think also revealed a lot to us about the work that needs to be done. So those might be some additional ways to kind of suss out. How are we doing, you know, where, what else might we add? And for them to come in and talk too about, here's a way I could see this blending better in the classroom or, you know.
It would be an important component to add that it is, it was, yes.
You're still garbled, Valerie. I hate to interrupt you. I'm so sorry. I don't know if it's a problem for anyone else, but I still hear you as garbled.
Yeah.
Yes, I was going to say that also, Allison, that, you know, the, the, the climate survey that was done for the high school and middle school students would certainly be an indicator. It was so broad in its questioning that it would provide opportunity for students to indicate how they were being impacted by the work of DEI. You know, I think there's sort of, to me, I sort of feel that there are two goals of multiple goals, but two main buckets of goals of the work. One is really, it's sort of the content and mind frames that occur in the classroom instruction. And then the other piece are more interpersonal and about identity affirmation within the school district. And so I think those are the sort of the two big pieces that this work can really support. And that's, that's a lot. So I think, you know, collaboration with the other administration, with, you know, I, I'm pleased to see that collaboration is already built into how that role is perceived. Because I think for it to both feed and support the content and mind frames of instruction, but then also the student and staff identity affirmations. I think those are really two very significant things that interplay a lot. But I think are really, you know, beneficial when collaborating with a lot of different professionals in the building. So, you know, I want to thank you for the presentation. And, you know, I encourage next year for the role to go up to 1.0.
So on the, I'd like to jump in for a minute and say, well, as Doug alluded, in my own work at CUNY, at City College Medical School, we have been infused with DEI work. A couple of years ago, we brought in a dean for diversity. And I see the, the power and the impact of what she does throughout the system, both with things that go on at the school and the way that everyone is affected by things going on in the world. And I see that this role, the role of the diversity coordinator is a very similar kind of role. And I think that, you know, even though we heard from Janice and Melissa about what it would include, I actually have no question that this is more than a 1.0 position. That when you start doing this work at all levels throughout the school and, and it does involve getting into curriculum and, and you really start having to really look closely at things and see how, how we do what we do and how we can do it better. I guess, I have no question that this should be a 1.0 position this year and going forward. But, and I know that, I think it is, I applaud our district because we have been ahead of the curve. But I think we still have a lot of work to do in it. And it's not work that, it's not one and done. This is ongoing and it's learning for everybody. And it's hard, it's really hard and really uncomfortable. And I think it's something that we're all going to have to start to get used to and wrestle with. So I kind of see even bringing this position to a 1.0 as some of the perhaps discomfort within the district. But I think it's where we need to be.
So I guess my question is a little bit broader and it's for both Melissa and Janice. And I'm just wondering how you all envision the work that we're also having Dr. Price Dennis bring on? How you envision incorporating that so that the work that is done within this realm doesn't feel like it's siloed off, but that it's actually woven into encouraging teachers to incorporate this into their practice? And so that teachers also feel supported in doing work that may not be initially comfortable? How do you see that in terms of the, the development, how it will, you know, kind of develop over time? And I know that that's a pretty broad question, but that's kind of the thing that most jumps out at me. Like not only pragmatically, what are they going to do, but how are they going to find the time to do it as well? So it's, I guess, a few different strands in there that I'm asking the question about. Thank you and thanks for the presentation.
Sure. Valerie's having audio issues. I'm having visual issues, so please forgive me as my camera's going in and out. It's a great question and it's a really important question because what you're talking about is taking a systemic approach to everything. And it actually connects with the other comments that were made. You know, Jody, you referenced us being ahead of the curve. And I almost fell off my chair when the policy statement, you know, they said it was coming. And one of the things in there was a root cause analysis and Janice and I had just finished it, right? So that was the first thing. So we'd like to stay ahead of the curve on that. And then Lauren, you were talking about the pieces, right? One was that culture piece and how we're interacting and how we're attending and, and creating that sense of belonging. The second was that curricular instructional piece. And that's actually, that came out of the fruits of our labor. And then we further dissected that. So we've been having ongoing discussions with, with Dr. Dietrich Price Dennis about all of those things and about our journey. And originally, when we had, when, when we had planned to bring her in for the work of Chair Council this year to really elevate the culturally responsive sustaining education framework and provide that, that professional learning and engage us in a way that incorporates both self-examination and also examination of some of these, these, the principles that are associated with culturally responsive practice. The next layer is, you know, thinking about our journey and what we've, what we've navigated this year, what we've learned this year, what we've heard this year. We've recognized the need to involve even more voices in the planning process. And so one of the things that, that Dietrich is partnering with us and the ELA and social studies teams right now at the middle and high school on is taking a look at what would be most helpful to folks in those departments so that we can be moving the work forward together. so that we can be moving the work forward together in a way that is both differentiated and, for, for lack of a better term, really disrupting at a rate we can absorb in places where people are feeling our most valuable right now to advance the work that we are all agreed upon needs to happen and that it's difficult. So getting back to the original question Sylvia, part of what we're seeing is that some of that will sit with Dietrich in terms of her expertise and bringing in some of those research-based experiences from her professional realm. And part of that will be the design, the deliberate design of which pieces are the pieces that Janice will help to mobilize in an ongoing fashion in partnering with teachers and building their capacity and, and helping move those things forward. So, so I see it personally as something that's very symbiotic. Janice and I have had, and I forget who said it, um, I think it was Doug, that these things shouldn't sit separately, that they really need to be interconnected. And, and that's something that Janice and I talk about often. And we talk regularly too about it, how it cannot be one person doing the work. So Janice as change agent in this area to be able to help further the ripple effects of what we're working on together. So it does all need to fit together. And, um, you know, we've recognized the need to circle back around, which is a part of really designing professional experiences. Like they should be iterative, like we, we've learned things, we want to act on them. We want to involve more voice and have ma- and make sure that this is really, um, something that is valuable in moving the things that we've been learning about, like the culturally responsive scorecard indicators, the culturally responsive sustaining education framework. And we've been thinking a lot too about how we can make sure that everything we're doing is interconnected. So Janice and her facilitation of the diversity committee, we're making sure elements of that showed up in the racial equity learning days that the students and staff participated in. The compass that we brought in, the courageous conversations compass, which is symbolic of people entering conversations about race from different points. We've brought that into Chair Council. So we're, we're, we're being purposeful and making sure that things are incorporated. Janice, did you want to add anything? I apologize for my camera, everyone.
No, it's fine. I think you've said it all. I think Sylvia, the way I see it is, so Dietrich's our consultant. She does the work, right? The, the kind of the big, the macro. And then of course, she's only here a certain amount of time. So, so that work has to continue in between. And, um, I know Dietrich well and I know her work well. So we'll be able to work together to kind of fill in the gap so that the next time she comes in, we're ready for the next step. Does that make sense?
And, and how do you see encompassing what the student voice is? Because, you know, sitting and participating in the diversity committee, one of the things that I hear that I've heard asserted by some students is, you know, an interest in having, I, I feel like at least what I, what I understand is sometimes, uh, the student perspective is that things are discussed more from a historical perspective and they don't feel that there's so much engagement around current events and things that impact them in their real lives in a contemporary way. So I wonder how that's going to be captured, you know, even as this role, you know, in whatever capacity it takes on. How is that going to, how is that going to reflect what our students are thinking?
I think that, uh, student, the students have voiced that very loudly. Um, and they haven't said it once or twice, they've said it at pretty much every town hall. And I think our teachers have heard them. So we, as long as we continue to provide opportunities for students to have a space where they can provide their, uh, you know, what, what the experience is for them. Because at the end of the day, they are constituents. So we need to make sure that their voice is heard, that they feel represented. So, um, we do that now. And in the hope is that as we're moving forward, and I'm working with Melissa closely, that the more work, the more teacher works with us, the more DEI becomes part of the culture of the school, we'll start seeing change.
Well, thank you very much Melissa and Janice for, uh, preparing the presentation this evening and, um, for sharing, um, the historical perspective of how we've gotten where we've gotten. I know also, uh, Dr. Henning Piedmont had an opportunity to present, um, this work of our district back in December to the Westchester Putnam School Board Association. So I think it, it remains, um, it remains a highlight that we can, the board continues to support this work. And I, I hope that, um, the board in general continues to do so. And I think the recommendation for the board to receive regular updates is important. And hearing it through student voices included, um, as Sylvia pointed out, I think, would only round out the kind of information, um, that, that we can hear going forward. So thank you for joining us this evening, Janice.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, Janice.
Hi, thank you.
We're going to move on to the business items of the meeting. There are, uh, 10 items, uh, listed under business items. A, are there any questions or comments regarding these business items? Is there a motion to approve business items one through 10?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Under business items B, um, we have, um, the budget and nominating committee slate vote for the 21, uh, 2021, 2022 school year, uh, from Westchester Putnam School Board Association. This is, uh, a requirement as we are a member school district of this association. And, um, we are, uh, requested to vote on the approval of these items. Is there a motion to approve the budget and nominating slate for the Westchester Putnam School Board Association for the school year 21, 22?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Under business items C, there are the placement and services for C, SC and CPSE. Are there any questions or comments regarding these placements? Is there a motion to approve the placements for services for CSE and CPSE?
All moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Under personnel, under appointments, there's one item. Are there any questions or comments regarding this appointment of a substitute teacher? Is there a motion to approve this appointment? Second?
Second.
All in favor? There is one amendment, um, regarding a leave of absence. Is there a question or comment regarding this amendment? Is there a motion to approve the amendment? Personnel 6B. And a second?
Second.
All in favor? There are three items under the leaves of absence. Are there any questions or comments regarding these leaves? Is there a motion to approve the three leaves of absence?
All moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? And, uh, there is a resignation. Um, and this is regarding the appointment of Drew Wendell, who is now, uh, in, tenured as director. And this is, um, a resignation for his other previous position in the district. Is there a motion to approve this resignation? I think Doug, is there a second? Allison, all in favor? Um, we have approval minutes for the Board of Education meeting from April 20th, 2021. Are there any questions or comments regarding these minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the board meeting of April 20th, 2021?
All moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. We now have our second comment period. Members of the public are invited to speak to the Board of Education regarding any district business. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. If you could please state your name and if you're a resident of Hastings. And please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen and Melissa DeLa Barrera will call on you.
Dr. Lang?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to say, um, very, um, appreciative of Melissa and Janice for all the work that they have done with the diversity, um, committee and everything. We really thank them a lot and we so wish that, um, this work really continues in a permanent way. But I was just curious as to what plans, um, they may have in place or planning to put in place to provide a more specific strategic framework that will literally transfer all this rich body of knowledge and experiences that, uh, teachers admin, everyone is get, is going to get through the work of the DA, DEI over time into a more practical, sustainable implementation within the curriculum and culture of the school. I, I'm just thinking that we, there isn't this kind of reinventing of the real approach happening, but rather a way that will be integrated to provide more of a continuity when natural turnover is even with the staff or teachers and admin or cares in the districts. I'm just wondering what, what the real strategic framework is going to look like. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any more public comment.
Thank you, Melissa. Are there any comments from the Board of Education?
I, I want to make a comment about the, our minutes and say, I know Maureen, you can probably join me on this one, that it's really a pleasure compared to years past when we could spend a half an hour going over problems with the minutes. So I just want to give a shout out and say thank you.
I know there's been a lot of activity in the district regarding Teacher Appreciation Week. And I just want to, from the Board of Education, uh, thank all of our educators, um, personally and as a member of the board, um, to say, um, we appreciate all of the work you've done this year in particular. It's, you know, it's been tough going since, uh, since last year. It's, um, you know, I, I have previous training as a performer and a dancer and it's as if you got script pages, uh, two minutes before the curtain went up. And then we're told to wear tap shoes when you've been trained to do ballet. Um, and then the second act, um, something different happened and the set changed again and new music came in. Every single moment, um, things keep changing and that kind of, uh, flexibility, while attending to all of the needs of our students has not been overlooked. And we certainly appreciate, um, all the work of all of the educators throughout our three schools. And last, I just want to remind, um, the community that there is a vote on May 18th for the school budget. And for trustees to the Board of Education, our next board meeting will occur afterward. So for all that are listening now and who all who may view this recording, I hope that you will, uh, vote on May 18th.
Lauren, I just want to thank you for what you just said to the teachers. I think that was really beautifully said. And, um, as someone who's on the board, but I'm not so involved in the day-to-dayness of the district with my kids in the school, it, I'm glad to hear that there's a lot, a lot going on in the district to acknowledge the teachers. Cause it really has been, I mean, it's always a job that needs to be appreciated. And it's certainly the past year has been above and beyond anybody's wildest dreams.
Is there a motion to close the Board of Education meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thanks, guys.
Night, everyone. Thank you.